Can we please have roll call?
Commissioner Hudak.
Here.
Commissioner Parnas.
Here.
Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Drosky.
Here.
Mayor Gantz.
Here. If we could everyone please stand for a moment of silence in our pledge of allegiance. If we could have approval of our city commission meeting minutes for the regular city commission meeting minutes of March 19th, 2019. We have a motion of second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. We have acknowledgement of our city board meeting minutes from our planning and zoning board, February 7th, 2019. Our cultural committee meeting minutes from December 17th, 2018, January 7th, 2019, January 16th, 2019, and February 11th, 2019.
I can motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. We have approval of our city commission agenda for April 2nd, 2019.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Our words in recognition, this is in recognition and in memory. The city of Deerfield Beach, Florida recognizes the demise of one of its daughters. Nina Siscalva was born on July 11th, 1957, she was 61 years old. She lived in Deerfield Beach in Starlight Cove. She loved and enjoyed life. She worked hard for everything she had and always saw the happy and positive side in everything that came her way. One of her greatest passions were helping others. She always wanted to help and give back to the community. Nina's family describes her as their best friend, they're always together, they were always together. And when she wasn't with her family, she was dancing. She danced all her life. Nina had many accomplishments, she was the proudest of her amazing and wonderful daughter, Lilia, and son-in-law Mark, whom will carry on her legacy of love along with her grandchildren, who she loved and cared for deeply. She will be greatly missed by all who knew her. In loving memory of Nina Siscalva. Mark? We have a proclamation. This is a wonderful group effort for something that we had here in the city of Deerfield Beach, our annual sip and stroll. The second annual sip and stroll event was held on March 2nd, 2019 at Constitution Park, and it was a tremendous success. The event was nearly sold out at 450 tickets. This is over double the numbers that we had last year for this event. There are many people to thank for this event. We'd like to take a moment to thank our volunteers, the Quanis Club of Deerfield Beach and the Friends of the Deerfield Beach Arboretum, as well as our city staff. Without their support and dedication to this event, it would not have been successful as it was. The hard work to ensure that every detail was perfect absolutely paid off, and it was perfect. We look forward to having you all come out for it next year. So we would like to recognize the following employees. Cassie Warren. Elizabeth Reece. Steve Colazo. Adele Trezino. Kenny Lawrence. Jacob Lucarelli. And our friends at the Deerfield Beach Arboretum, as well as the Quanis Club of Deerfield Beach. Would you all join us at the end of the podium here? Come right down to you. Not many more of these birds.
Our next proclamation is for Water Conservation Month. Whereas water is a basic and essential need for every living creature, and whereas the state of Florida Water Management Districts and the city of Deerfield Beach are working together to increase awareness about the importance of water conservation, and whereas the city of Deerfield Beach and the state of Florida designated April typically a dry month, when water demands are the most acute, and Florida's Water Conservation Month to educate citizens about how they can help save Florida's precious water resources. And whereas the city of Deerfield Beach has always encouraged and supported water conservation through various educational programs and special events, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference in conserving water, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can help all of us by promoting a healthy economy by saving water and having a healthy environment. Now therefore, I Bill Gans, Mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim April as Water Conservation Month.
We have someone from our environmental services?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you everybody for doing your efforts to conserve water. We have a rebate going on. You can visit the website, it's called Conservation Pay. If you miss all the water fishing, toilet, $100 back. But spread the word, it always helps. And we're doing better and better every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. This month is cyber security month as well. Whereas the internet is a shared resource and securing it is our shared responsibility, whereas everyone has a role in securing their part of cyberspace, including the devices and networks they use, as I see our city attorney shutting off his phone. Whereas the city of Deerfield Beach consistently encourages and supports cyber security training through various educational programs and special events, and whereas the city of Deerfield Beach has designated April a cyber security month to educate and encourage citizens and businesses to be vigilant and proactive in safeguarding passwords and internet access. And whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen can make a difference in protecting themselves and their organizations with safe practices against cyber crimes, and whereas every business, industry, school, and citizen must be educated on the risks involved with internet use and sharing content. Now therefore, I Bill Gans, Mayor of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, in recognition thereof, do hereby proclaim April as cyber security month. We have our information technology services?
Absolutely.
Would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Cybersecurity is something that the city takes very seriously. We know in the past few months, we've done an upgrade to click to Gov. 3. So your utility payments, you probably noticed that you had a change in how that happens. We had to create something where you put your favorite color or your favorite team, some of those kind of things, in order to safeguard to make sure things happen. Other municipalities that were close to us did not upgrade, and certain things happened to them as you probably have seen in the news. We definitely take it extremely serious when it comes to cyber security and make sure that things are done. In the city, we're doing training for each one of our employees to make sure that that happens. We're making sure that they understand about password security. And it helps not only for the city, but also in your personal to make sure everything is straight. You need to make sure that you don't have the same password for everything, because it makes it easier for us to hack. You need to have a complex password. You need to change your password. And you need to make sure when people call you and they say, "I'm calling from Microsoft," or "I'm calling from Google," please give me your information, that we do not give the information. We do not fall for those tricks which many people have fallen for, and that allows everybody to come in to get more information from them. They do it by calling, they also do it by emailing, and they may email you and say, "Okay, click on the link." If you get a link from a bank, let's say from the Sun Trust, and you don't have an account from Sun Trust, don't click on that link, not a good thing. So we just want to make sure that we're safeguard, the city takes it very seriously, and we thank you, Mayor. We appreciate it.
Thank you. As a reminder, if we could just make sure everybody turns off or silences their cell phones, please. City Attorney?
Yes, item four is in ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach, Florida, mending the city code section 4629 motorized scooters. To clarify the restrictions on motorized scooters, revise the definition of motorized scooters, add a definition of micro mobility devices, and prohibit the use of motorized scooters and micro mobility devices on public right-of-way, public sidewalks, and publicly-owned property, providing for codification, provided for severability, provided for conflicts, and providing for effective date. This was discussed at the last meeting. As the commission knows, the legislature is in session and is considering, we'll have to wait and see how they handle it, but we wanted to move ahead with this based upon the current standards of the law, and will react as necessary if the legislature decides to weigh in on the matter.
Excellent. Commission comments before he opens to the public? I'm not seeing any, I'm going to open it to the public, any from the public care to comment on this item? I'm going to close it to the public then. Commission?
Motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion, Commissioner Vice Mirdrowski. Commissioner Parnas, did you want to speak before we move forward?
Since the item is being brought up by the legislature, why are we not taking the same position that we took with plastic straws, to see whether or not the legislature is going to restrict us from doing so?
There are a couple of reasons. In a number of cases, on these type of regulations, for instance, on certain vacation rentals a number of years ago, the legislature will occasionally indicate that any ordinance adopted prior to a certain date survives, and things of that sort. That's never been done with the plastic straws, and it will not be done. And we don't know where the legislature is going to go. We don't know how strong they are on that. And it was our belief that because of the issues that could be raised and the investments that people could make in trying to put these scooters in the city, that it was appropriate at this point to come out front and do it. So we're recommending that we do this to avoid the situation that we talked about in Fort Lauderdale. If the legislature does something, we'll have to respond to it at that time. But as opposed to the plastic straws, these are situations where people are riding these things. There are dangers, there's the unsightliness of leaving them around, and we thought it would be appropriate to move promptly on that as opposed to the straw ban. We already have the straw ban in place, we're set there, and we felt that it was important to have this on the books. Plus, we're making our ordinance consistent with the definitions in the state statute, which I think is important to do.
We have a motion from Vice Mirdrowski, seconded by Commissioner Hudak. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak.
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Drosky.
Yes.
Mayor Gantz.
Yes, passes unanimously.
Item number five, a resolution of the-
Public comment?
Oh, I have a public comment, sorry. This is an opportunity for public comment. You will have three minutes to speak on a non-agend item, something not on the agenda. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted.
Anyone care to speak?
Rita Massey, 349 Northeast 19th Avenue. The situation with the trailer, or whatever it's called, on the beach. I do hope that we are not going to get involved with this as we did with the other one. I think it's a private matter, and they should work it out between them, because the last one cost us a great deal of money, and I hope we butt out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie Freitag, 418 Southeast 2nd Street. Just wanted to remind the commissioners and staff members that there is an excellent event going on this Saturday. The very first time Rotary is having their Italian festival in working with the Wyndham, and we really would like to see as many people out there as possible, as many staff, as many city, and as many city constituents out here. We'd love to see everybody at the beach this Saturday.
Thank you. Anyone else? Are you coming up, or are you taking your time?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. At the next commission meeting, I know you plan on voting on the second reading to amend section 98.53 B1 Business Community District to increase the minimum distance separation requirements for pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries in the B1 zoning district from 250 to 500 feet. I do not understand why you were voting on this when at the last commission meeting, the commissioners from District 1 and 2 clearly voiced their preference for a ban on future medical marijuana facilities opening in Deerfield Beach. You also had this proposed ordinance from the January 15, 2019 commission meeting. At the January 15, 2019 commission meeting, city attorney Anthony Soroka stated "Staff was directed by Mayor Gans to prepare a limitation within the B1 district to prohibit standalone pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries as a permitted use in the district, but to only permit them as an accessory use. The proposed ordinance provides for that limitation in that zoning district. Currently, these establishments are permitted principal uses." Again, the problem is not medical marijuana facilities, it's what happens when recreational marijuana usage is passed by the state in the not-too-distant future. At only 500 feet, you have the potential for other dispensaries to open on A1A along the S curve. The attorney for MedMen at the January 15, 2019 meeting stated that there are already 14 medical marijuana license holders in the state of Florida. It is very naive to think they will not want to be located where there is a lot of foot traffic. A ban prevents this from happening. Just since the last commission meeting, a 2,000-square-foot building on the A1AS curve at 2054 Northeast 2nd Street changed hands for $1.8 million. At $900 a square foot and the acquiring company being registered in Delaware, it does not take Sherlock Holmes to figure out this building's intended use. So you see, commissioners, you do not have the luxury of time here. Do the ban, live with what is already here, and stop the proliferation of recreational marijuana facilities in the heart of the tourist district while you still can. Be proactive, not reactive.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Put your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Peterson, 270 Southeast 5th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Welcome.
So it appears history is repeating itself again with the RV showing up yesterday on the beach in front of the Berkshire Beach Club. Timeshare is located at 500 Northeast 21st Avenue. In order for the city not to repeat the mistakes it made in the past, a little history lesson is in order. In 2015, three businessmen put an old Airstream RV on the beach just south of where the new RV is located. The city in 2016 paid Mr. Sweet Apple, Mr. Gold, and Mr. Speckler $1.7 million for six small parcels of beach land, even though there were no other entities wishing to buy their properties at any price. Why did Burgess Hansen not work with Mr. Sweet Apple when he came in front of this commission in 2014 to possibly work out a settlement or compromise? When questioned about this transaction, Burgess Hansen only comment was how proud he was that the city was able to negotiate not having to pay the $1.7 million out all at once, but instead pay it over four years. Please, city manager Hansen, do not get fooled again, and give our taxpayer money to another person trying to extort money from the city. The person who owns the property, Christina Clovier, is in a dispute with Berkshire Beach Club over the- You also had this proposed ordinance from the January 15, 2019 commission meeting. At the January 15, 2019 commission meeting, City Attorney Anthony Soroka stated staff was directed by Mayor Gans to prepare a limitation within the B1 district to prohibit standalone pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries as a permitted use in the district, but to only permit them as an accessory use. The proposed ordinance provides for that limitation in that zoning district. Currently, these establishments are permitted principal uses. Again, the problem is not medical marijuana facilities, it's what happens when recreational marijuana usage is passed by the state in the not-too-distant future. At only 500 feet, you have the potential for other dispensaries to open on A1A along the S curve. The attorney for MedMen at the January 15, 2019 meeting stated that there are already 14 medical marijuana license holders in the state of Florida. It is very naive to think they will not want to be located where there is a lot of foot traffic. A ban prevents this from happening. Just since the last commission meeting, a 2,000-square-foot building on the A1A S curve at 2054 Northeast 2nd Street changed hands for $1.8 million. At $900 a square foot and the acquiring company being registered in Delaware, it does not take Sherlock Holmes to figure out this building's intended use. So you see, commissioners, you do not have the luxury of time here. Do the ban, live with what is already here, and stop the proliferation of recreational marijuana facilities in the heart of the tourist district while you still can. Be proactive, not reactive.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Put your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Peterson, 270 Southeast 5th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Welcome.
So it appears history is repeating itself again with the RV showing up yesterday on the beach in front of the Berkshire Beach Club, timeshare is located at 500 Northeast 21st Avenue. In order for the city not to repeat the mistakes it made in the past, a little history lesson is in order. In 2015, three businessmen put an old Airstream RV on the beach just south of where the new RV is located. The city in 2016 paid Mr. Sweet Apple, Mr. Gold, and Mr. Speckler $1.7 million for six small parcels of beach land, even though there were no other entities wishing to buy their properties at any price. Why did Burgess Hansen not work with Mr. Sweet Apple when he came in front of this commission in 2014 to possibly work out a settlement or compromise? When questioned about this transaction, Burgess Hansen only commented was how proud he was that the city was able to negotiate not having to pay the $1.7 million out all at once, but instead pay it over four years. Please, City Manager Hansen, do not get fooled again, and give your tax, our taxpayer, money to another person trying to extort money from the city. The person who owns the property, Christina Clolier, is in a dispute with Berkshire Beach Club over the use of her beach property by Berkshire residents without receiving any compensation. The city should stay out of this dispute and not let our tax dollars be wasted again. I think it's important.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public care to speak? Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm going to close it to the public.
Item number five now. This will be a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach approving the award of ITB 2018-19/22 for sulfuric acid, 93% for water treatment plant operations, for an annual cost of $131,400.
Commission comments before we open to the public? City Manager?
I was just going to say, if you have any questions, staff's available to answer.
It's an invitation to bid.
Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anyone come forward. I'm going to close it to the public. Commission?
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Parnas?
I'll second it. I was going to make the motion.
Commissioner Hudek made the motion, seconded by Commissioner Parnas. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Madroski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number six is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, awarding ITB 2018-19/18 Hillsborough Boulevard for water main replacement directional drill to RP Utility Excavation for an amount not to exceed $553,000. Again, the ITB means invitation to bid or going to the lowest responsible responsible bidder.
Okay. City Manager?
Yes, just quickly, if the City Commission would like, I can have Mr. Good give a brief overview of the project.
Sure.
Yep.
Commission, you all right with that?
Yes. That's a great idea.
A wonderful good evening, Mayor, Commission. Thomas Good, Environmental Services Director. We have a brief presentation prepared for you. I'd like to have Mr. Alan Fati, who's our Utilities Assistant Director, come on down and give, go through his presentation with you as he's project manager for this job.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're looking to award a contract for water line replacement on the Hillsborough Boulevard. We have three water lines that crosses the-
Could you speak into the mic for me, please? Speak into the mic.
We have three water lines that crosses the waterway, and one of them been out of service since 2015. We hired a consulting firm to design the waterline, and the design was completed late last year because of a lot of permitting and, you know, difficulty of designing it. The project was bid in January and awarded and received bid for, I think, five bids received, and the lowest bid was from a particular contractor that we're talking about. The existing line is about 10 inches, we're replacing it with 12 inches. Right now, right now, we're only using two of the lines that pressurize east of the waterway. With this one, we can do a better job of providing pressure toward the east side of the city. We talked about this. If you can see in this picture, basically, the water line is going to run south of the bridge on Hillsborough Boulevard, right north of the Tree George's Restaurant, and goes across and connects on the other side, close to that southeast 18th Avenue. Really, it's not going to impact any of the traffic, a little bit right at the end when we do tie-ins. It's going, it's basically directional drilling is going to set up on the west side of the waterway and drill under the waterway to the coast. Any questions I can answer?
Commissioner Parnas?
How deep is that pipe from the surface?
The surface approximately, we're going to say about 28 to 30 feet from the top of the water. It's going to go there. It's going to start and going to curve down and come back up. So on one side, you're going to be pretty shallow, four, five feet, and then when you get under the water, you're going to be close to 28 to 30 feet deep, and then comes back up.
If it's going to be five feet near the shore, would that not be dangerous of a boat?
Well, it's not on the shore. It's on this, you know, by the George's Restaurant.
Okay.
It would be about five feet. Then we start drilling down and going across. We can drill about approximately a 30-degree angle.
Okay.
So it's going to go down like this and then come up on the other side.
All right. Thank you.
Is this the same position as the existing one that's there now?
No, it's going to have to be moved over because we can't go at the same locations.
Okay.
So it has to be moved probably about five to six feet.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm going to close it to the public. Commission?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion from Commissioner Parnas, second from Commissioner Preston. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Madroski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, approving the State Housing Initiative Program, Local Housing Assistant Plan, and Providing Effective Date.
City Manager?
Yes, if the City Commission would please, Ms. Vicki Placeta Picard does have a brief presentation if you'd like to hear. I think it's worthwhile for the general public.
Everyone all right?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Vicki Placeta Picard, Community Development Director. Tonight before you is the Local Housing Assistance Plan. The city is a recipient of State Housing Initiative Partnership Funds. We've been a recipient since 1993. Our part of receiving the funds every three years, we have to submit an action plan to the state, identifying what we'll use the funds for on an annual basis. As you'll see in the plan, we identify three projects. We have our purchase assistance funds, our home repair, and then in the event that there's a hurricane, we have a strategy in place for disaster funds. The state funds, as you know, every year they're being threatened. So last year, we only received $100,000. Right now, in the proposal, we have about that. That funding can increase or decrease dependent on what happens after May 2nd, when the legislation is completed.
Okay. Thank you. Commission comments before we open to the public? Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Sorry, Commissioner, I'll come back to you. Not seeing anybody come forward. I'm going to close it to the public. Commissioner Hudek?
I was just curious how the state determines how much money we get or don't get. How does that work? Briefly. I don't understand.
Sure, that's okay. So the ship funds are from the Sodowsky Act, and when individuals, when every time there's a sale of a property, that goes, the dock stamp actually goes up to the state. Broward County actually signs up about $28 million to the state of Florida for this funding. However, the trust fund does not have a, the trust fund, the funds should come to cities based on how many your population, and there's a formula that they use. However, the legislative for the past maybe eight, 10 years have rated the funds and used it for general funds. So in reality, if the city was to get its full allocation, we receive close to $1 million. But unfortunately, each year, that funding amount changes. So we haven't received our full allocation in about 10 years. Last year, with everything that happened February 14th, we lost a lot of the funding, so we only got $1 million. So it's hard. There is a formula in place that we should receive close to $1 million. However, that's not being followed completely. Sorry for the longer version.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Preston, do you want to speak?
I just wanted to ask, how many people do we have enrolled in that program?
Right now, we're currently assisting about maybe 10 individuals that have full applications. And we did a workshop earlier this year, and we anticipate doing another workshop in May or June to advertise the program.
And how are you advertising it?
So the advertising, we send information through social media, we do press releases, we reach out to the churches, we have information on our local community centers, the housing authority, in addition to any of the homeowners association as well. Our marketing team does a great job in getting the information out for us.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Parnas.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Preston. We have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Madroski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number nine, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, vacating-
What happened to eight?
Eight, eight. Item number eight, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, mending fiscal year 2018-2018 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan by reallocating CDBG funds to the sidewalk improvement program.
City Manager?
Yes, quick, just quickly, I do have Vicki here, but this is just an amendment to reallocate for sidewalks, but she can do a brief overview for the general public as well if you'd like.
Okay. All right. Vicki?
We do have a map up. We're working with Environmental Services Department to identify areas between Hillsborough South to Fourth and MLK East to Dixie. In that community, there are quite a few areas that do not have sidewalks. So what we're going in is to complete those areas that do not have existing sidewalk to have the connectivity for them to go to the grocery store, the main areas out to MLK. Funding was allocated in the budget last year, but after working with Environmental Services, additional funding is needed. Right now, I believe they're requesting proposals for the preparation of the construction documents and the ADA ground construction.
Thank you. Commissioner Parnas?
Yes, I have a question. Crystal Lake Drive has no sidewalk in many areas. Has any consideration given to putting a sidewalk for the people there?
I think this probably goes outside of what this is right now.
Correct.
Okay. That might be something for the City Manager to answer separately from the side.
All right. I'll see you later.
Little preamble, what's coming next, I can see. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Not seeing anybody come forward and close it to the public. Commissioners, any questions? I do have a question. I'm sorry, Vicki, as you run away. I know in other areas of the city where, when the development was originally done, there was no sidewalks put in, and we run into issues in which some of the community wanted the sidewalks and others did not. Have we run into this problem in this area as well?
Not in this area.
So most of it's all on public acts, on public property?
Yes.
Not private?
Yes. We actually, during our community meetings, had quite a few of the residents complain that they need sidewalks. So this was one of the areas that we received a lot of, a lot of requests.
Okay. Thank you. Commission looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Parnas. All in favor, say, actually, let's do a roll call on this one.
Commissioner Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Madroski?
Yes.
Mayor Gans?
Yes.
Item number nine, in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, vacating and abandoning a portion of a 10-foot-wide utility easement located at 27 South Dixie Highway in connection with the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center expansion. This is first reading. It has to be passed on to readings. The public hearing is scheduled for April 16, 2019.
City Manager?
Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Power do a brief presentation on this matter.
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, Eric Power, Director of Plan Development Services for the City of Deerfield Beach. So what you have tonight is actually two items that I'll speak about, the concurrent item after this, item 10, in regards to abandonment of a right-of-way and the abandonment of an easement. So what I have before you is a current site plan. For next meeting's agenda, you will have a site plan resolution approval for the addition of the teen center to the Boys and Girls Club. And if you can see, the area that is in yellow is the area that we're speaking about for the right-of-way and the easement access. It's completely within the property of the Boys and Girls Club. The area, that's red, right? The area in red is the property line, and then the area that's in green is the proposed expansion of the teen center. So you can see that the easement we're referring to is within the Boys and Girls Club. Typically, what happens with easement abandonment is you don't see an abandonment request until after a project is built, but because they do need to remove these easement abandonments prior to building the teen center, the request is coming before you today. And this is first reading, so you'll have the ability to look at this again in second reading, along with the site plan resolution at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? I'm going to close it to the public. Oh, yes. Okay. Not going to close it to the public yet. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Theodys Times, address 772 North Deerfield Avenue. And these two items, as Mr. Power said, they're basically running together. And the reason I'm here is I'm the pastor for Zion Missionary Baptist Church, and this is going to basically encroach on our plans of expansion. We had no idea that any of this was going on. And we've been good neighbors with the Boys and Girls Club for 20-odd years that they've been there. We've been in the same place for, this August will be 117 years that we've been there. And myself and the deacons, we decided that we wanted to start to expand the church. And unbeknownst to us, at the time, Commissioner Battle was sitting, and we went to her because we wanted to actually claim this easement that we've been maintaining for an essence of 15 years? 15 years or plus. Commissioner Preston, this issue dates back to when he was sitting as a commissioner before, and the commissioner, that was before you, Commissioner Parnas.
Yes.
What was his name? Rosenzweig. He remembered this issue. We came before you before, and I believe we just didn't tie up the loose ends on this. We want to be good neighbors to the Boys and Girls Club, but we don't also, we don't want to block ourselves in, and we don't want to cheat ourselves. And what's going to happen is, is that with the roadway coming in behind our church, is it's going to limit us in expansion of what we plan on doing. And it will basically box us in and deny us of what we want to try to do. We've come up with some other solutions with our other neighbors that we feel is, though, would basically solve this problem, and we feel like there's some other avenues, some other things that we can discuss. We had no idea any of this was going on. We weren't notified. The only way that we found out any of these proceedings were going forward, we wanted to claim the property, and we contacted Commissioner Battle to go forth. I also met with Mr. Power about a month ago, and, you know, this is how we found out that these things were going forth. So right now, we're not in favor of abandoning the easement, and we're not in favor of the roadway coming behind us. We'd like to come to some other solution, you know, to this issue. And we've been in contact with the Boys and Girls Club. We've met with Mr. Bryan and the director, and we'd just like to find another solution at this point because it's definitely going to block us in.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much for hearing.
Anyone else from the public?
Octavia McDougall, 49 South Dixie Highway. I would like the commission to table this for right now. We are neighbors of the Boys and Girls Club, and we are 100% behind the expansion. However, we have had some meetings previously in regards to some alternative ways to make this happen. We do not agree with this particular plan as we feel that it is extremely dangerous for the kids in our community. We are experiencing a lot of, we are experiencing a lot of kids walking through our private property right now, and we would like to sit down with the Boys and Girls Club- property right now, and we would like to sit down with the Boys and Girls Club and anyone else that's involved with the planning on this, that we can come up with a really good safety plan that includes ample sidewalks, lighting, speed bumps, and other measures to make sure that there are safety measures in place. A lot of children are gonna be walking to and from the Boys and Girls Club. Currently, right now, they walk through our property, and again, from a liability standpoint, we're really, really concerned about the traffic that will go down this road. There is a private road that we have agreed to work with the Boys and Girls Club that's already existing, and we would love to sit down with, again, decision-makers to figure out a solution to use the road that's already there, and any other neighbors that are in that area that, you know, just, again, make this a safer alternative for the kids in the community. I think the plan to go behind the church is probably not the best use of the land, especially, like I said, when there's already a road existing that the Boys and Girls Club can use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good evening. My name is Matt Chiani, I'm with Shaw Drotus and Associates, we're the civil engineer on the project, representing the Boys and Girls Club of Broward County. And I just wanted to clarify a few items that were just brought up by the public. The first item I'd like to clarify is that myself and the, Brian Quayle, who's the CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, did meet with the property owner to the south regarding access to the site. No agreement was made between property owners to utilize the private road leading up to the site. Therefore, we revised our plans to utilize the city-owned right-of-way, which leads to Southwest First Terrace. The other item that I wanted to clarify is that, that is not an easement, that is city right-of-way, and as recommended by the city, the Boys and Girls Club would be developing that right-of-way into a road, it would remain a public road, and the Boys and Girls Club would be dedicating an additional 10 feet on the north side of that right-of-way to provide a sidewalk connection from Southwest First Terrace to provide safe access to the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center. As part of the site plan that you'll see in the next commission meeting, there is not only safe access to the teen center, but there is also adequate lighting over the sidewalk and street. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm gonna close it to the public then. Commission comments? Commissioner Preston, I'm sorry.
The Boys and Girls Club has been very instrumental in the community, doing a lot of good things for the youth. But it's important that we remember that First Zion has been in that building, which is, to me, historic, I don't know what the, actually, the technical criteria for a historical building, but whatever it is, I think they gotta meet it. 100-plus years. And like the Boys and Girls Club, who may have ideas about expanding, and, you know, whatever their position are, but so does First Zion. And that's gotta be taken into consideration, just as you would take into consideration for the Boys and Girls Club. And, you know, I just heard something about that there was no agreement between the property owners to the south in trying to solve this issue. We were out there the other day, and the property owners were there, and they said nothing but good things, trying to fix a problem. It was suggested that maybe this be table, I think that's a good idea, because what I saw that particular day were people trying to actually solve the issue, and some, and they were amenable to just making some adjustments so that that could happen. So we have to really consider that there is, it's coming from different angles, different ideas on this that we need to take a look at. But first and foremost, we have to remember that that church has been there a long time, and they should be given the utmost of consideration.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudak?
I am in agreement with Commissioner Preston. I think, it seems like all parties are entering into this negotiations in good faith, and I think we should give them an opportunity to come to a win-win solution.
Okay. City Manager?
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to have Mr. Power just address some of those concerns, because this is not something that is new, and there's been a lot of involvement to try to resolve this.
Thank you. If I can just speak from here, so I can look at the map. I just want to point out, there's two items of discussion, and I don't want to convolute the two. The concern that the speaker's brought forward today is in reference to this area here to the south, and I want to just magnify this area here to the south. This, and this is not something that Commissioner or the public has seen yet, this is a proposed site plan to be brought forward to you at the next commission meeting. However, the area between this dash line and this dash line is city property, and is deemed city right-of-way. And it is correct that the applicant would be responsible to maintain the adjacent property that is right-of-way until the area's been developed. The items before you tonight are this area here in yellow, which is solely on the property of the Boys and Girls Club, and in no way affects the solution proposed in this plan or a potential solution that would be proposed along First Avenue. This is simply an item to alleviate or remove the easement and right-of-ways that have access issues regarding the connection between the proposed Boys and Girls Club and the existing Boys and Girls Club building. The items that are in discussion from the public tonight will be discussed at the next meeting.
And sticking with this item, I, it's my belief that it should move forward, since it's two separate issues. And we can deal with that, and certainly keep in mind what was said tonight, when it comes before us for that particular other side of it, but considering where it's at on the northeast portion of this property, completely separate. Is that correct?
They are separate issues. I understand why they feel connected, but they are truly separate issues.
Commission? Commissioner Parnas?
Being this is the first reading, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I think you wanted to say something before?
Mr. Power, so what we're looking at here does not affect the church at all?
No. What we're looking at tonight, the area within the yellow, is solely with on the property of the Boys and Girls Club, and does not affect the church's wishes to expand to the north.
Okay. And, and the next item, the right-of-way, none of the things that we're voting on today would affect them at all?
No, neither item does. There are two hatchings here. If you can see, there is one that is a diagonal chevron hatch, and then one is a cross hatch, and those are represented here on the scale. If you look at the legend here, I'll zoom in for you, sorry. So the one we're looking at is the right-of-way to be vacated and the utility easement to be abandoned. That's what those two hatchings refer to, and that's this area here. If it would, if it makes it easier, I can show it on an aerial.
Whatever.
Yeah. So the area we're referring to, this is the Boys and Girls Club, this is the McDougall property, this is Zion Church. This box right here is the area that is being referred to tonight for the abandonment. The proposed building is about this area here, and they're proposing a connection between the two buildings, which is why this is being abandoned. The area that they are referring to for the expansion is this entrance here, this is city property. So if you look here, this is city right-of-way, and then this would be the property line for the church, and then the property line for the Boys and Girls Club.
So again, we're talking about it. Again, Eric, we're talking about this section.
The area you're referring to is, is right here, I can, yeah. Right here.
Commissioner Parnas, you stick with your motion?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Item number 10, it's in ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, vacating and abandoning a portion of a right-of-way located on Southwest First Avenue at the property located at 27 South Dixie Highway in connection with the Boys and Girls Club Teen Center Expansion. No, we just, this is the right-of-way.
Same location. Anyone from the public here to comment on this? I'm gonna close it to the public then. Mr. Powers, you want to explain this second one?
So this is essentially the exact same thing, just going back into the easement. This particular item is referenced, I'm sorry, this particular item is referenced the abandonment of the right-of-way, this area here and this hatching.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Preston?
When you look at the property lines, as you showed them before, Mr. Power, even though we were just looking at, at that specific, specific area, and not anything directly related to the church, eventually, it does, will connect with what they are planning to do, and, 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 and what they're planning to do. So eventually, it will enter into it. We may not be looking at it specifically, exactly, you know, tonight with the church, but when you look at those two property lines, and as the Boys and Girls Club go forward in development, eventually, they connect.
I understand what your statement is. If the, if the property, I'll actually show it back on the aerial, might be a little easier. So the original intention to access the teen center of the Boys and Girls Club was to use Southwest First Avenue. Unfortunately, as you can see, this isn't exactly right-of-way. Not only do the McDougals own a piece of the property, there's also another property owner here, and another property owner here, that doesn't make it possible for the applicant to utilize this road. However, as we've stated, all these property owners are working in good faith with each other to try to resolve a solution that would not include having this roadway along the north property of the, or the south property of Boys and Girls Club, the north property of Zion Church. And if that was to occur, where Southwest First Avenue was to be an entrance, this would still need to be abandoned. So, so either solution that would be amended, because this is private property, either solution, whichever way it works out, will require that this be abandoned for the connection between the existing Boys and Girls Club and the teen center.
Commissioner Preston?
Now, when you take a look at this, let's assume that the Boys and Girls Club is able to go, go along, that we eventually get a site plan, I mean, we're basically gonna look, and we see what they want to do. When that is done, that basically stops the church at that point from being able to develop in any way that they would choose to, although it's not direct, directly a huge problem right now. But it would be, because if we were to go forward with what we're looking at here, eventually, you know, if we were to say to the Boys and Girls Club, "Okay, go do your thing," the minute that happens, that stops them from being able to do any of the things that they want to do.
Commissioner Preston, I have not had the opportunity to speak to Reverend Tynes on this particular matter, but we have learned that unfortunately, there is an existing water line running along the right-of-way from this property that cannot be removed or abandoned. And the church's hopes to alleviate, to abandon this right-of-way, to expand northward, is not going to happen. And I was hoping to meet with them, to explain that to them, but I have not had the opportunity yet.
So you're saying it's impossible for them to expand?
Northward.
In trying to stick with the item that's in front of us, and I understand, I, I don't see how, even if, aside from what has just been brought up, I don't see how the expansion of the church would be impacted unless they were looking to try to get the same exact abandonment all the way up there, which would seem like an odd layout to try to do for the church there. And the McDougall property, I could kind of see, but this, this portion goes so deep into the private property of the Boys and Girls Club, I don't see where it's having that kind of a negative impact on either one of the two properties. The other area in which we're talking about, certainly, I can see where that would be up for debate, and I, and I totally get that. I don't understand the issue with this section up there. If they're gonna build a second building, and they want to connect it over to make sure the kids aren't in the rain, or whatever it has to do, to be able to cross at that point, and, and not have that property, doesn't make sense to me. That's my two cents. But we're gonna have to take some kind of action, so, commission? Commissioner Parnas?
I've made a motion to approve on first reading.
Okay. Looking for a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Commissioner Drosky? We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston? I'm sorry, Commissioner Parnas?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
No.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
Yes.
Mayor Gantz?
Yes.
Comments by administration and legal, legal has none?
Yeah, just...
Might have you come back. Actually, I do, if you don't mind, you do have a comment. Can you comment regarding the 500 feet on the medical marijuana dispensary and the new property that's been purchased?
Oh, yes. I think the question was raised with regard to, Eric, if the 500 feet...
Can you hear me, Eric?
I can hear you. If, if the distance is increased in the B1 district between medical marijuana dispensaries and pharmacies, it's increased from 250 to 500 feet, based upon the location of the one medical marijuana dispensary at the Burgify location, would there be a commercial location, commercially-down location, in that B1 area where a dispensary could locate with the 500-feet restriction?
So the, the property, the Burgify property, which is where the MedMen dispensary will be located, is, is here. I believe the property that was purchased is this property right here. I can do a kind of a brief measurement from distance separation. It is from property line up to point of building, from building to building. This is approximately 51 feet. So if I went, you know, from property line to property line, from building to building, it's approximately 87 feet. I mean, currently, this particular property would not be permitted to be a dispensary or a pharmacy based on the existing ordinance. The concern and the increasement would be because of this particular property, sorry, and its location to the parking garage, which is outside the border, it's about approximately 300 feet, and then additional property, commercial property to the west, which is beyond 345 feet. So the expansion to 500 feet would ensure that the entire area around the S-curve would not be able to receive an additional dispensary.
Thank you. So this is timely, and this is a way to prevent any others going into that area. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. City Manager?
Yep, thank you. So just quickly, I'll have Mr. Santucci come up in a minute, but I also would want to address the beach property, not the current one that we're having code compliance and BSO investigate, but actually, the six lots that we purchased several years ago, or a few years ago now. So number one, there is no one fooled, including me. We knew very much what they were doing, and the whole purpose of the negotiations with those property owners was to protect the quality of life for Berkshire, for the Venetian, for Tierra East, and for the general public. Because what those attorneys wanted to do, and they very well could do it with their property rights, is open up a commercial... and they very well could do it with their property rights, is open up a commercial... Well, I mean, it's a done deal. I think I have every right unless you want to advise me...
You have a right to say whatever you want to say. I'm recommending that you don't, but you have a right to.
Well, regardless, you want me to stop?
Yeah, I, with all due respect, I tend to like to listen to the guy with the shiny head next to me more so than...
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Bill.
But the whole purpose of purchasing that property was to protect the quality of life for those residents and for the visitors. It wasn't to give somebody a million-plus dollars.
No, and I didn't mean to be that sharp with the city manager, because I think some of the things that were said about were incorrect in regard to the way that deal came down. And so, I understand, I'm sorry to do it, I'm just being cautious, and I apologize for the way I came across in indicating this is not necessarily the venue to do it. And sometimes you want to do it, I understand why you want to do it, but I just, you're recommending that.
Okay, thank you.
Very well, Mr. Santucci, if I can. Unfortunately, Captain Brimlow could not be here, there was a family issue he had to leave for, but I want to talk, just not about the text to 911, but also, can just talk a little bit about the issue that we will be implementing in West Hillsborough Boulevard because of the accidents that have occurred out there with the speeding?
Absolutely. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commission, David Santucci, Assistant City Manager. First, let me address the issues on Hillsborough Boulevard. Obviously, we've had some issues with excessive speeding, and first and foremost, the captain is well aware of that as well as the staff, and they're taking measures to prevent any such incidents that have occurred in the recent past. The first thing that they have done is they have posted the slowdown, no speeding signs. Those were put up today, so you should see them as you're coming into the border of Deerfield Beach. And then, I believe there's another one that's going to be placed further east. Once the additional sign becomes available, it's currently in use. Additionally, they are putting patrols and out there every morning, afternoon, and late at night when these events are occurring. What they typically do is they go out there and they try to, they monitor when the speeding is occurring, and then they place those traffic officers out there at those times when it's most likely that they're going to catch the speeding. Any questions on that?
City manager?
Yeah, thanks. Just to expand on that, one of the issues that we will be bringing forward to the City Commission during the public budget workshops in late June is whether or not the City Commission, while we have the major roadway issues with speeding, you still have the internal residential neighborhoods. I know the Cove, I spoke with Commissioner Houdak, with both Commissioners Parnas and Drosky about speeding in their residential neighborhoods. And then I also know in District Two, we have some drag strips along there as well. And so, we're going to be coming forward with some type of plan to put in speed tables or other type of control devices that where it's much easier and where our engineering department can actually place them in conjunction with what BSO law enforcement thinks. Because the speeding's not going away, we're actually seeing an increase. The other issue that Mr. Good will be working with Broward County on is the timing of the lights. So during rush hour, it makes sense to have those lights synced, but the synchronization of the traffic signals. But what's happening, and what Captain Brimlow and Mr. Santucci think are happening, is the fact that during the off-peak hours, when you have just a straightaway like Hillsborough, 10th Street, Dixie Highway, Federal Highway, people are just putting the pedal to the metal, and they're not slowing down, there's no brake. So we're gonna be working with them to see if there's a way to put more pausing on the lights, even though it might be an inconvenience for people traveling through the city. It's a problem. One thing to note, the accidents that have occurred out there have not been Deerfield Beach residents. The at-fault have either been from Boca Raton or Coconut Creek, Coral Springs. So, but clearly, it is a speeding issue, and we're addressing it, and we're taking it very seriously. On this stretch of roadway, in particular, coming down off the Turnpike Bridge, they are gaining a lot of speed, but we're looking at this on a citywide scale and then also within the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. If you do have any streets that you have concerns about, please see any of our elected officials here tonight, and we'll make sure staff gets with you to put that on the map for it. Commissioner, Vice Mayor Drosky?
Speed kills, period. This is the third major accident in this small area of Hillsborough Boulevard this year, within one-eighth of a mile. The gentleman who was here at the very beginning of our meeting, I don't think it was clear, but his mother-in-law was killed on Hillsborough Boulevard, very near where this accident this weekend was, no more than probably 50 feet away. So something definitely has to be done in our city. It's not a district issue, it's a city issue. And I appreciate the city manager and the Assistant City Manager and BSO being proactive on this issue. But, you know, putting patrols out there for a couple of weeks isn't going to solve the problem. It's gonna slow them down, when they go away, they're gonna speed right back. So it's something that we have to look long-term in this issue. When we look at the individual interior roads to the neighborhoods, we need to concentrate, you know, just not on the main arteries, because, for example, I know of one neighborhood where you put a speed hump on Street A, and yes, it slowed cars down on Street A, but alls that did was force the traffic over to Street B, and there's speeding on that street now. And that's the same issue that we heard from the residents that live in the Cove when they were here a couple of meetings ago as well, that they, the traffic is speeding on the side street. So we need to come up with a comprehensive solution, or at least a game plan, on a comprehensive scale to attack this problem, because, you know, four deaths in less than three months is not acceptable.
Good, thank you. The next subject I wanted to talk about is the county's initiative to expand their 911 capabilities. And so, they are launching text to 911. And so, what text to 911 is, is exactly what it says. Instead of calling 911, you will now have the ability to text to 911. They are promoting this as a last resort. So, call when you can, only text when you're unable to talk. And we do have a short presentation that the county has put together, and I'd like to go ahead and show that, if I may, to the City Commission and the public, and then I can follow up on anything that's missed in the presentation, and of course, answer any questions.
911 is an emergency call. That is part of more than 140 million dollar investment approved by the Broward County Commissioner. Texting to 911 is not available in Broward County. Call if you can, text only if you can. If there's a special useful or individuals who may need help, or if hearing or may have a station parent. Texting to 911 should also be used in situations where it can be unsafe to make any calls, including active shooter incidents at home invasions and domestic violence. The number to silence your cell phone before texting. When you say text, the location is not automatically identified. Always text the exact location and then the pedal with emergency. If you can appear to answer questions in the following instructions from the 911 call center. You need to have a text or a gain of plan with your carrier to text to 911. If text is not available in your area, your home carrier will send you a message to make a voice call to 911 instead. Text to 911 may take longer than a voice call. Key text messages planned and concise. Language translation for text is not available at this time. Avoid using slanted abbreviations, sending through text messages, photos, videos, dashes, or emojis. Please do not text in drive. Visit 911.broward.org for more tips and information. And remember to only send a text to 911 when a voice call is not an option. Call if you can, text only if you can.
So again, this is the county's initiative to bring text to 911 to Broward County. This is a state requirement, and approximately 50% of the counties within the state either have text to 911 or are in the stages of implementation. So this has to get done no matter what. As they said in the video, it currently is only available in English translation, and you are not to use emojis or pictures and videos and that sort of thing. They do not go through the text to 911 system. It works in the same manner as a voice call, meaning that if you text in to 911, it is queued in the dispatch system and given to the first available 911 dispatcher, who then takes that information, asks a series of questions to verify things, just as if they would do if it was a voice call. Most importantly, they're gonna verify the address first. That is probably the, one of the more difficult pieces of information for them to acquire via text. Your text system on your phone is different than the system that provides the actual phone call. The phone call provides a more precise location for them to respond to rather than the text. The text message actually only shows the location of the tower for which it is associated with. So that's the reason why if you ever need to use text to 911, the very first question they ask is going to be, please verify the address. Aside from that, they talked about only in having the ability to text in English at the moment. I'm sure the county is looking into that to expand that service as the diverse community that we do have here in Broward County. But again, think of this as the implementation stage for the program. The reason why they do not have that available at this time is, like I said, they, the text will go into a queue to the dispatchers. It's not necessarily going to know the language in which it's coming in, and therefore, the dispatcher who's receiving the text may not be bilingual. So that's the reason for that. With that, I can answer any questions.
Commissioner Preston?
I think that this text to 911 is a good thing. It provides another option. But you know what? The success of this is critical, that a person actually controlled their emotion, because if they don't silence it like it was asked, then you could have another situation. So, you know, people who are very panicked because something is happening at that moment, you will have a whole nother set of challenges if they don't silence. And that's gonna be, I think, the success of this. It may have to evolve over time, but I think the key is that at the moment that something is happening, that they have to actually remember to control their own emotions and silence it.
Commissioner Parnas?
I was at a meeting with Chief Tony today, as a matter of fact, and the program started today. Right now, you could text 911 if you needed to. So it's operational. It is on a limited basis, like you've been told. No foreign languages, silence your phone, but it is now functional, as of today. So if you need to use it, please do.
Yes, sir.
And just to piggyback off of that, Commissioner, one of the things the county did reiterate several times was that they will be going after abuse of the system. So they have seen other places where it's very convenient to send a text, obviously, and there could be false texts made to 911, and so they will be monitoring that to ensure that that doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just quickly before the overview for the city's financial transparency tool, both Mayor Gantz and Commissioner Houdak have asked separately for an update on the Southeast 15th Bridge. So if you'd like, I have Mr. Good come up, thank you. I have authorized it as an emergency, so if you want to talk about that, Mr. Good, thank you.
Again, a wonderful good evening, Mayor and Commissioner Tom Good, Brown Mountain Services Director. So, you know, the last update we had, we were talking about having design engineer prepare some construction plans so that we can move forward with the repairs. So that's been completed, and those construction plans have already been delivered to at least three contractors that we know of, who are able to provide us with some quotes on the work. The work we're expecting the contractor to do is that they're gonna have to literally demolish the entire parapet wall, and then they're gonna have to install a crash-rated, a concrete, crash-rated traffic railing. So, we are still waiting the responses. These contractors, you know, they already know what our material cost estimates are, but they have to figure in the labor costs and some of the other resource requirements in order to be able to do this work. We believe that in the absence of getting these responses back, we're estimating about a six to eight week for the construction completion, because it's a very intensive work. Once we receive the quotes, though, then we will be working with the attorney's office and the procurement office in order to expedite the award as was directed by the city manager. So if there are any additional questions, I'm asking.
When you say you have to tear out all the parapet walls, that's on the entire bridge or just on the side in which the collision occurred?
We are gonna be required to take both parapet walls out. Once you touch this bridge, you have to bring it up to current standards, and that's the whole point behind the crash-rated.
So that includes the wall that goes directly across it, and as it connects over on both sides?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And we're still looking at six to eight weeks, and there's no way to be able to expedite that any further?
Yes, sir.
Okay. One other question. What about, slightly related, because it came from the detours that happened, the new signage that was supposed to go out in some of those streets, is that still on path with the lowered speed on the adjacent street?
Yes, sir. So we just recently received the response back from Broward County. We had made a request to put in all-way stops at some of the locations, particularly 13th, where it intersects with 6th and 5th Place. And we also asked them to reduce the speed limits in the community to 15 miles per hour. The county has responded back to us and denied us that request, because they said that we don't have the traffic volume in order to do the all-way stop, nor do they believe that the 15 mile per hour is relevant for that particular community.
Okay. Is that something that we can go back to them with?
We've made the request to Broward County Traffic Engineer. I think it may need to be taken at a different level.
That's what I'm thinking. Thank you.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna answer for you, is I think...
We'll speak to Mayor Bogan about it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Commissioner Houdak?
Just a quick question. So the construction is gonna take six to eight weeks.
We're anticipating that. We're estimating it. To be honest with you, we need to get the contractor to give us a response to be more accurate.
So do we have any anticipation on when we're gonna get word back from these contractors?
We are pressing them right now with urgency. We delivered these plans to them late last week, and so we are making constant phone calls, asking them to provide us with their quotes. We're not going through a standard, long-term quote process. We're telling them, as you get that information, please provide it to us.
Any ideas? Is it gonna take them two weeks, can take them three weeks? Best guess?
All I can tell you is we are constantly on top of them, asking them to expedite that request for us.
So basically, if we start tomorrow, we're talking July?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next, Tom?
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I'll have Ms. Allison Teslia and Ms. Nicole Giordano do an overview and a quick tutorial on the financial transparency tool. I think this is very important for the general public and for the City Commission, because you are dealing with real-time budgetary data. So it's a great tool. Thank you.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Nicole Giordano, Program and Innovation Manager. With me is Aslan Teslia, Budget Manager. Tonight, we'll be providing a tutorial on the financial transparency tool and updates on the function of the program for non-financial data. In an effort... In an effort to provide more inclusive and transparent budget, the city of Deerfield Beach is pleased to present our Financial Transparency Portal. The city partnered with OpenGov to provide a web-based financial transparency and intelligent tool that dynamically presents the city's revenues and expenses, from historical trends to line item-level details. By using the financial transparency platform, residents and staff have around-the-clock access to the financial data, updated on a daily basis and subject to adjustments. Additional context and descriptions of the city departments and programs can be found in the budget document online. The transparency tool allows you to explore historical budget and financial data in a simple graphical user interface. You'll notice the title of the report you're viewing on the top, along with the account type selector. You can click on Views on the left-hand side to view a list of common or favorite views on each report. Select Filter to display key menus. You can show the dropdown to select the data that is of most interest to you. Use the broken-down-by dropdown to specify the category you'd like the data organized by in your chart or graph. Select the Filtered By option to view the data filters. These filters allow you to select exactly which data you want to include, exclude from your graph or chart. Use the search function within each filter to find exactly what you're looking for. If there are multiple years of data, a fiscal year slider will be present below the Filtered By menu. You can move the slider, select fiscal years of data you'd like to see. There are five different types of visual representations of the data. A stacked percentage graph to see percentage changes over time. A stacked line graph to visualize overall trends. A line graph overlaying each trend. A pie chart to view percentage breakdowns by year. To view the data for other years, move the slider below the pie chart. And a bar chart comparing trends and percentage breakdowns over time. Below any chart or graph, you can view a table detailing the financial information in the visualization above. Use the Help dropdown in the top right-hand corner to view a short how-to guide with tips on navigating the platform. You can recall the Welcome screen. View a short Budget 101 Primer with basic information on multi-fund accounting. And staff is available for assistance on the transparency tool under the Contact Deerfield Beach. Use the Share dropdown in the top right corner to share your customized graph or chart through social media. Send a link of your customized graph or chart through email. You can use the Download dropdown in the top right corner to download an image of the graph or table as a PNG file and download a spreadsheet as a CSV file. In reviewing multiple years of data, you may see spikes in the individual years. This can be due to unexpected expenses such as a hurricane, equipment failure, a capital project, or rollover encumbrances representing projects funded in a previous year that are ongoing. In addition to the financial data, staff is actively working to add non-financial data. As requested at the budget workshops, the departments continue to submit quarterly performance measures. The next quarter submittal date is April 10th. Staff will be analyzing the information and appropriately adding to the transparency tool. In addition to performance measures, the strategic action plans and capital improvement projects will be added to the financial transparency tool in the near future under the Stories section. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Item 13?
Yes.
Item 13, Resolution of City Commission urging all members of the Florida Legislature to support House Bill 107 and Senate Bill 76 to prohibit the operation of motor vehicles while using wireless communication devices for the purpose of non-voice or voice interpersonal communications, directing the city to transmit a copy of the resolutions to Broward League of Cities, Broward League of Cities' Broward Legislative delegation.
Commissioner? Anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Not seen anybody come forward. We'll close it to the public. Commissioner? Vice Mayor Drosky, Commissioner Preston, then Commissioner Partners?
Before we make the motion to approve, I mean, I sponsored this last year. In simple terms, it's no texting while driving, and to make it a primary offense, which it currently is not, it's absolutely mind-boggling how it's not currently a primary offense. They can't pull you over for texting when you can see it in plain day. You can drive down any road and see somebody texting, but the officer can't pull you over unless you're doing something else. And the data is overwhelming that accidents are caused by distracted drivers, including texting. So making this a primary offense, to me, it makes common sense, and I don't think the legislature is waiting to hear how Deerfield Beach weighs in on this issue, but I think we should at least put our two cents in that we are in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Preston?
Question I have, is this related to talking on your cellphone as well?
I don't think it's to...
It says, "non-voice or voice interpersonal communications."
I'd have to pull the actual bill, but it's texting. It's not talking on your cellphone. I see the attorney, I see him flipping papers.
Gee, I'm looking for, I don't see a copy of the actual bill here, but my understanding was that it was a texting, it was texting while driving.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Sort of kind of.
Not exactly definitive, but I understand, yeah. But if you wanted to, you can adopt it with, based upon, any corrections needed to be made, so that it would be focused on the texting while driving provision.
Okay. Commissioner Partners, then Commissioner Hudak?
Yeah, I have a question about this. I have a newer car than a lot of people. It's a 2017. When my phone rings in the car, I have a button on the steering wheel. I don't touch my phone. I can talk and then click off. Will this bill affect us in any way?
I don't believe so. As a matter of fact, I think it's going in the opposite direction, that that's what they're requiring, that to be able to use your phone in the car, that it's going in the opposite direction.
The reason I'm asking that...
They're not going to prohibit voice speaking in cars.
All right, because in my car, you can't use the keyboard at all. You can't dial numbers if the car is moving at all. If you try to, you get a message that says, "When you're completely stopped." It will not, I can't dial a number in my car, which is good, but it's good for incoming calls where I can speak to somebody without taking either hand off the steering wheel. And I hope this bill does not affect it.
Commissioner Hudak?
I was actually looking to expand the bill to include using your cellphone, but just, you have to use a hands-free device. This is the terminology that they use. That's how you're using your cellphone, by, when you're driving, you can say, "Call Mary Louise," and it'll call Mary Louise. Not that you're picking up the phone, and so that's how I would like it to expand, to include the texting, but also, if you're going to be using a phone, then it should be a hands-free device.
And I think that's exactly, in reviewing the resolution, I think that's referring to, referring to the dialing, if you're dialing, you know, dialing a phone while you're driving.
If you're going to use a phone, it should be hands-free.
Yeah, I think this is, so that's the direction it's going towards, the hand-free, and that's what this resolution would support.
The actual title of this at the Florida State Senate right now is "Texting While Driving." So that's how they're referencing it.
I would like to see us expand it, then, to include hands-free.
We can't.
Oh, we can't.
This is merely us showing our support for a bill that's coming forward. But I like your idea.
Then I support it.
I'll second that motion.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to...
We have a...
A motion.
You're making the motion?
I'll make a motion to support it.
I'm sponsoring, I'm making a motion.
Commissioner, Vice Mayor Drosky, you've made the motion. Commissioner Partners, you're seconding. We have roll call, or all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? There's opposed? Passes unanimously.
And we have word that this bill is limited to non-voice. It's been corroborated.
Okay.
Not by me, but by everybody.
Thank you. Next item?
On the discussion of the selection of the voting delegate to the Florida League of Cities.
Vice Mayor Drosky?
I'd like to discuss 14 and 15 in together, if we can, please, because I'd like to also step back to our last meeting with the mayor culpa. I guess I got excited with the pomp and circumstance of the new commissioners joining the commission that I didn't realize that we were voting on the Broward League of Cities at the last meeting. And I've been involved in the Broward League for the last two years. I'm on their Legislative Policy Committee. And no offense to my colleague from Commissioner Wong, but we put him as our voting member on the Broward League. So I think I'd like to kind of take that back, if at all possible. I see you smiling, so at least I didn't...
How many of these chocolates you got left?
And if you, but in doing so doing, I'd be willing to give you, or vote for you, the Florida League of Cities, which requires a conference, I think, in August to go to. And I don't know how my other commissioners feel, if they're interested in that as well. But in lieu of, you know, taking back the Broward League, if you're interested in the Florida League, I'd be happy to consider that, yes. And then with respect to the National League, I'm going regardless. So I've already made plans to go, so I would volunteer to be a voting delegate at that conference as well. I don't know how you all feel, but that's my two cents on those two items. Plus, I'd like to reconsider the Broward League from the last meeting as well.
Okay.
Is that clear, Bud?
Well, let's address the one that's not on the agenda, the Broward League. Commissioner Hudak, are you willing to?
That would require a motion for, technically require a motion for reconsideration, but someone on the prevailing side, which I think is everyone up here, and if it's seconded and it passed, then you're back to square one, then you could appoint...
I'll make that motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed?
Matter of reconsider, so you need to take action on it now.
Okay. We need a new Broward League of Cities voting delegate?
Who would that be?
Hmm.
I'll nominate Todd Drosky.
I'll second it.
All right, way to go.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Back to our regular scheduled events here. Number 14 for the Florida League of Cities. Who would like to go? I think more people can go, and I do recommend it, because obviously, there's a lot of seminars, and one person can't cover them all, but we need one voting delegate.
And I'll go ahead and take that.
Okay. We need a motion to nominate...
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Hudak, thank you.
Commissioner Hudak.
Second?
Representative in Orlando.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? None opposed? Okay, National League of Cities?
I nominate our Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor Drosky, we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We have roll call, please, or excuse me, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Comments by Commissioners? I'm going to start with District 1.
Oh, I've got a couple of them, so I do talk as a little long-winded on this one. The first thing I would like to do is congratulate Ara Weiderman. He is the president of the Friends of Deerfield Beach Island. They have just received, he has just received an award from Dan West, who's the Director of Parks and Recreations, and it was presented to him as president and founder of the Deerfield Beach Island Association. I'm sorry, Deerfield, Friends of Deerfield Beach Park. For their group, they've done a lot for Deerfield Beach Island. They've put benches down there, chairs in there, they've got the kayak rack, the kiosk with the wingspan sculpture. They've really, really elevated that park, and he deserves a lot of the credit. The result of this award also creates additional funding for the park from the Broward County. So, you know, my hands out to him for all of his hard work in getting that done. Next thing we've got is, and Katie had mentioned it earlier, City Earth Month Beach Cleanup is this Saturday, and that's from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Volunteers will meet at the kiosk right in front of the fire station. And then, right after that, is the Italian Fest. So I encourage individuals to come out and help take care of our greatest commodity, which is our beach. District 1 Saturday meetings will begin April 13th, 10:00 a.m. to noon. And if any District 1 residents need to meet with me, please contact the city manager's office, (954) 480-4263. Couple of other things that I really want to bring up is, I've been speaking with the city attorney with regards to a formal review process for our city manager. I've looked at the recommendations for the ICMA to try to develop a form, and I'd like to take the point on that, if that's something that the commission is interested in doing. I think it's important, not only for the city manager, but also for a historical process. Being a new commissioner, I'd like to see, you know, how things have gone in the past. And unfortunately, I don't have that ability, because there is nothing in writing that I've been able to find. I know that he has a lot of support from the commission, but being an HR person, I find it extremely important that we try to formalize that process. So that's something that I would like to propose, and I'd be more than willing to take the lead on that, to try to develop something with the city attorney. We have a Chamber of Commerce breakfast coming up on Thursday, the 4th, and I think I'm good.
Thank you. District 2?
I would like to let the constituents of District 2 know that there's going to be a District 2 meeting on April 12th at 7:00 p.m. That will be at the Ovita McKeithen Recreational Park in the Johnny Tigner Center. And again, that's April 12th, 7:00 p.m. If you should have any kind of an issue with whatever is, you know, that you might be dealing with, and if you need to talk to me directly, please take down this number, (954) 728-5886. And that will, that's direct contact to your commissioner. During the campaign, there were many, many challenges that I had to deal with, and I really had to understand that my district was really challenged with a lot of different issues as it related to youth sports. So it was a huge concern, and I could see that a lot of emotions were frayed. There was a lot of miscommunication with a lot of different things and a lot of perceptions. And so we need to just do a good job with fixing these things. So I'm asking the city manager to work with me, so we can address some of these things and some of the concerns of the city and District 2 as it relates to youth sports. And I would welcome his help in this particular area.
That's it? All right. District 3?
Yes, first, I want to thank the staff, especially with helping me with traffic in District 3. They've done a good job getting down speed bumps and monitoring trucks going through residential areas. I like to see all the citizens in the city safe. And they've done a good job in aiding the slowdown in various areas, especially in residential areas where kids play and should be safe. Other than that, District 3, I was pleased with those of you that ride down military trail, to see code enforcement helping to clean up what used to be a junkyard. People throwing couches, mattresses, desks, anything they could, out on military trail. Not on Monday... Not on Monday for Tuesday pickup, but on Wednesday, Thursday for Tuesday pickup, making military trail look like a junkyard. Well, they've done a great job. I went through there yesterday and today, especially today, and watched what was out. Sunday, there was nothing. Absolutely not a hair out of place. People are beginning to learn what the law is about bulk pickup. Find out from your Commissioner what day bulk pickup is in your neighborhood and put your bulk out the day before or very early on the morning of the day. Now, part of my district is Tuesday, Century Village is on Friday, which means in the village, you can put things out on Thursday for Friday bulk pickup, not on Sunday. Since we're all buildings, most of them are now putting up security cameras with a sign, "You're under surveillance," so people don't come throw their junk and run away. We want the city to look nice. It's a great city to live in. Let's keep it clean. And I appreciate the efforts of those citizens and staff that make every effort to make us the best city in Florida. That's all I have.
Thank you. District Four?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have my Saturday office hours this Saturday, April 6th, from 10:00 to noon here at City Hall. Anyone that would like to make an appointment, contact the City Manager's Office at (480) 4263. Several of the slots are already taken, but I think there's one or two left for this Saturday. I took the mayor's message at last meeting to heart, where he told us to, you know, to appreciate, you know, when people do good things, to appreciate and to recognize them. And that's what I did tonight at the beginning of the meeting with a certificate of appreciation to the folks that were involved with the Sip and Stroll Event. It was not only city staff, but there was outside organizations as well. So I'd like to try and do that, me personally, at every meeting, because I think there's enough thanks to go around to everybody. But I need your help. There's a lot of people that we run into as elected officials that we see on a common occurrence, but there's a lot of people behind the scenes that we don't see, that are heroes as well here in our city. So the department heads here in our city, if you have any recommendations to the residents, if you run into people in your daily encounters for someone that needs to be recognized, call us, email us, and let us know, because maybe we're not overlooking somebody that needs to be recognized. The city has hundreds of employees, but we don't really necessarily, or I don't necessarily run in to every single one of them, and they probably deserve the same recognition as the people that I do run into frequently. And so I would appreciate your help in making those people known to me so that they can be properly recognized here at a commission meeting. That's all that I have, thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of items, and sticking with that, I do want to praise our BSO Fire Rescue and BSO Police for, these tragedies that we've had recently have been horrible. We had two people lose their lives on Saturday, and it's Saturday evening. A grandmother and a granddaughter. And it was just a horrible accident, and just their response was immediate. I heard the crash from my own home, and I heard the sirens almost immediately. So their response was fantastic. I know that cannot have been an easy scene to work, much like it wasn't for the other accident that we had along Hillsborough Boulevard. So I do want to praise them, and there's many to name, but in general, I do want to thank them. I do want to single out one employee in particular, who I've seen at multiple events take a leadership role in going the next step, whether it be picking up garbage, helping out a resident. But George Sullivan, thank you very much, wherever you may be. Excellent job that you've done. As many of you probably read in here in South Florida, the seaweed issue has been really, really bad. It's not something that's unique to Deerfield Beach, it's been all over the coast. It's, the seaweed that's been there, it's an unusual occurrence that they're having this much of it, and it's certainly put our employees at test to try to keep up with it. So please be patient with it. It's not that we're not on top of it, but it's constant, and it's a huge amount, so please watch that. On May 18th, we have Haitian Flag Day, and I know we've worked on this in the past, but I just want to make sure that's still on our radar. We've talked to a lot of people in the Haitian community. It's a very important day for them, and make sure the city is recognizing that as best they can. And try to expand on what we've done in the past with that as well. The other thing that I have is, when talking about these accidents, every area of the city is touched by areas that have speeding, that people don't follow the rules. Some of it is preventable, some of it isn't. You can't stop 15-year-old from driving over 100 miles an hour in Hillsborough and hitting someone, under the influence, potentially. You can't stop someone from not paying attention or being irresponsible in some way, potentially, and crossing a curb, hitting a curb and bouncing into oncoming traffic. But there are things we can do. When we get into the inner areas of our city and the communities, when we talk about traffic calming, Commissioner Vice Mayor Drosky brought this up, that you put speed bumps in one area, it impacts another area. We do have to look at an overall comprehensive plan, and we've talked about this. I can tell you in one particular area, I believe he's referencing, in the past, I'm going back 12, 15 years ago, when traffic calming was presented in that neighborhood, one section of the neighborhood didn't want it, others did. The ones that got it don't have those issues, but it did force it all into the next street, which is a completely different community. That decision, I think, has cost them. So it's something that we need to pay attention to. Everybody wants traffic calming until it's put right in front of their house, also, I can tell you that. And part of the city's policy is we make sure everybody's on board for it, and we want to do that. So at some point, you're going to, there's going to have to be some give and take. We do look for consensus in the community when we install it. We try not to do something that's too oppressive, that takes away, you know, people's properties. Some of these roundabouts that have been done in the past have been monstrous, and in my opinion, somewhat effective, but in more like a boon, a big boon for whoever was building them. But please let us know where there are areas that you have concerns with, and we can come up with a comprehensive plan to how to address this. The policy has changed over the years as far as where traffic calming can go. There was many years, and we remember when we were sitting up here, that we weren't able to get it anywhere. So that's changed. So now we want to do it. I saw a hand go up, but don't tell me right now, but please, as soon as the meeting's adjourned, let us know. But we would be very happy to hear from you in about two minutes, as soon as the meeting is adjourned. So you can let us know at that time. But those of you, please reach out to us and let us know where it's at. We can try to prevent, as best we can, some of these incidents that have occurred. With that, that's all I have. Oh, one other thing, I do want to direct staff to reach out to Mayor Bogan and Commissioner Fisher with Broward County to see if we can get a change on this speed limit reduction as well as the additional stopping, or four-way stop that we requested that's been rejected by Broward County. Let's directly speak to them and see if we can get them, I'll call them personally as well. Okay? Thank you. With that, that's it. For a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.